Welcome, everybody, to our Monday, August 5th, 2024 Oakwood School Board of Education meeting. Glad you all could make it. Ms. Sauber, could you please call the roll?
Ms. DiLorenzo.
Here.
Ms. Kawhi.
Mr. Ryder.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here. Would you all please rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could, please, could we get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. Kawhi. Ms. DiLorenzo. Mr. Ryder. Mr. Wilson.
Aye. And could we get a motion to approve the Board of Education work session and regular session meeting minutes of July 8th, 2024? Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Ryder. Ms. Kawhi. Ms. DiLorenzo. Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Next up is item number two, Reports and Public Comments. Start with our superintendent report.
Okay, yes. Good evening. We're excited to begin the 2024-25 school year. Last week, we welcomed our new staff members to Oakwood Schools, to our family for professional learning, to introduce them to our schools, and to also build relationships with them. They were also energizing. It was energizing to have them in, and it just helps to kind of keep our purpose on our why, of why we educate students, because they were just so glad to be here. I want to talk about my summer. Over the summer, I got a chance to read the book The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt. Governor DeWine referenced this book when calling school leaders to ban cell phones during the school day to allow students to focus on the learning and also build social skills among their peers. And in The Anxious Generation, he explores the collapse of youth mental health in parents and presents a plan for a healthier, freer childhood. He discusses the decline of the play-based childhood and the arrival of the phone-based childhood in the early 2010s, and how this great rewiring of childhood has interfered with children's social and neurological development. The book also explains why social media damages girls more than boys, why the boys have been withdrawing from the rural world into the virtual world with disastrous consequences for themselves, their families, and their societies. So, in partnership with Wright Library, I'm very excited about this, but we're conducting a community read to discuss topics addressed in this book. You can save the dates. If you haven't seen this already, it's been in the Oakwood Register, and there's been on social media, but the dates of October 24th, October 30th, and November 14th, to join us at Wright Library in the evenings, more information will be provided for that. The space is limited. The actual physical space of the room is limited, and so we don't have actual sign-ups yet, but Wright Library's going to take care of all of that. And once they release that, people will be able to register for that. We'll see how things go. If it becomes amazing, then we may do this and replicate it in the spring and do the same book and do this in the future. Might be in the spring, we decide we're going to do a different book, or we'll wait till next year, but I love just the idea of partnering with our library to do things like this. Please note, this is for the families that might be watching this at home, is that we're not getting there to discuss school policies at the meetings. Instead, it's just an opportunity to engage and dialogue about the book's tenets regarding the impact of cell phones. As a Board of Education and the administration, we are in charge of setting policy. So, that's a different conversation. We're also one week away from bringing all of our staff together to kick off the new year. In addition to introducing our new staff and setting the stage for an exciting year, we're also going to unveil our new mission and vision statements at our opening day on Monday. Last spring, we convened a committee made up of teachers, principals, students, classified staff members, parents, and community members to reflect and draft those statements. And then, based on their feedback, we conducted a community and student survey to gather feedback to help refine and finalize our plans. I can tell you that we received from our external facilitator that looked over the results, first of all, was very, very appreciative of how many respondents that we had, and I had to explain, that's Oakwood. We have a lot of committed people that give great feedback. So, we're excited to share those statements next week to embark on our new journey together with a community-driven strategic plan. Finally, we're also continuing those steps indicated in the 2018 Master Facility Report. That report created a roadmap to address our long-range facility plans to promote safe, dry, and secure spaces that support the educational and instructional needs of our current and future generations of Oakwood staff and students. So, in order to provide more transparent information with the community, our district webpage on our facilities mentioned above contains pictures and more details of what occurred in Phase 1, in addition to the overview of our three additional potential phases. And by the master facility timeline, the next one is scheduled to occur somewhere between 2025 and 2028. Phase 2 is meant to focus on renovations at our Smith and Harmon Elementary Schools with prioritized infrastructure upgrades like mechanical, electrical, plumbing, security, ADA. The plan is also meant to consider options to respond to space constraints in these buildings. In addition, targeted infrastructure work is going to be set at the junior high and high school. The master facility plan is strategic and not only attending to our school's physical needs to maintain them for student learning, but also aligns with the Ohio School Facilities Construction Commission to match projects for state reimbursement dollars to potentially fund future components. In order to continue with this timeline of the community-driven master facility plan, we've also been in early conversations at our board work sessions for the past few months and some of the board meetings that we've had previously to engage in conversations about potential timelines and initiate contracts for assessments. I'm going to ask our business manager, Frank Eaton, to come to the podium to share some of the information that's occurred and some items that you'll be voting on tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here this evening. So, just a couple pieces that I have. At last month's board meeting, we shared two informational items to provide clear and transparent information to you and to our community. The first was a contract proposal for a pre-bond limited services agreement. The purpose of this agreement was to engage with Richly Architects in order to update assessments of the district facilities based on the 2018 Master Facility Plan. The second was for pre-bond construction services. The purpose of this is to engage with Dana's Construction to provide updated cost estimates based on the updated facility assessments that will be completed by Richly. Tonight, Dr. Gupta will be recommending for board approval the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, or OFCC, resolution to participate in the expedited local partnership program, or ELP. The purpose of this resolution is to allow us to earn funding credits towards future state-approved facility projects. Dr. Gupta will also be recommending a reimbursement resolution. This resolution will allow us to use money from a future bond issue to reimburse Phase 2 costs that are incurred from the general fund, or Permanent Improvement Fund, prior to the bond issue. And then, lastly, I want to reaffirm Dr. Gupta's statement that no decisions have been made at this time. The work that we are doing is based on a 2018 Master Facility Plan, allows us to gather information now in order to have a productive conversation later this fall. There is a target date identified in the ELP application resolution. The reason for that date is that it's required for the application in the event that we would move forward at that point, and keeps us on track to be able to move forward if that decision is made in the future, but it does not in any way tie us to that date. Thank you very much.
Okay. That concludes my superintendent report.
All right. Next up is Curriculum Showcase: Excessive Media Exposure.
Yes, and if I can have Dr. Lang, she's making her way to the podium now, she'll introduce our curriculum showcase.
Yes, hi. Tonight, we welcome our preschool teacher, Beth Fries, and Beth is going to share some of her research about excessive media exposure and some strategies that will help our teachers and our families to reverse some of those effects. So, I also want to congratulate her for completing her master's degree just on Friday. So, Beth, come on up.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As you heard from Dr. Gupta, media and children can be a very contentious topic, but my goal for my research was, how do we get past this? How do we move forward? How do we make a difference in children's lives? And I start with the little ones, so they come to me first, starting at age 3, and we are seeing more and more of the media exposure and its effects. So, I'm going to have you go to the next slide. I'm not going to read through these slides. I put up some things that you can read through as I talk, but what my goal was, was strategies that I can use in the classroom, but how can I present those strategies to families that they can implement at home without them feeling judged, or like I'm saying, your child is on too much media? I mean, that can be hard to have those conversations, but it's very important that they are respected and they see how I'm going to, I want to show you how I was going to present it. So, the strategies that I used to summarize, the biggest things have found that the reason why children are struggling so much is when they're on media, they're not engaging with anyone else, usually. A lot of games that are out there, that even the educational games are not interactive sometimes with another person, but if I can encourage those games to parents that are educational, that encourage parents to sit down with their child and talk about that, that's a start. There's also things that can be offered, which I did last year with my class, was a family media plan. It's been developed by Children's, Cincinnati Children's, and it asks some really neat questions. I actually did it with my family and my kids. I have all teenagers, and it brought up some really neat conversations, and I have the link at the end, but really encouraging parents that if you're doing something with media, to engage with your child. A lot of countries, it's illegal to even expose a child before 12 months, and American Academy of American Pediatrics really encourages that children not have any media exposure at all till 12 months. So, we're finding that when the preschool students come in, they don't know how to play. I've got a classroom full of toys and centers. A lot of times, they'll just sit and kind of look like, what do you want me to do? And so, that was scary for me, and that didn't just start after COVID. I was seeing it before. So, strategies we're implementing is a media-free area in our classroom, and then we encourage that at home. You know, if you can have a safe spot, quiet space for the child that you just interact or you read, making sure that I read the books, not necessarily putting them up on the screen. If I can't find them, you know, I'll go to media, but the children really engage more. I found when I read a story, they were talkative, they were laughing, they were talking with their friends, making sure I do small centers with my students, one-on-one engaging and talking with them, because really, they're not used to that. Pairing with a peer, so they talk with their peer. We're noticing communication. Children are coming in at 3, almost at a one-year-old level of communicating, and there's not a developmental delay there. It's just they don't know how to engage with other people. So, we bring in some of the teenagers. We have book buddies that come, that are 4th graders that come, and they read with them, they talk with them. I've incorporated drawing, so that if they have something they're excited about, half the time, I'm seeing a lot of video games that really should not be played as a young, but you know, I can show the parents when I have their portfolios and say, you know, look what they drew, and the parents are like, what is that? That can lead to a conversation during, you can switch the slide. I'm sorry, I meant to tell you that. Also, during when we have family conferences, I give them packets of resources almost every two or three weeks of different things and centers we're doing of how they can implement at home. I always kind of stick a media thing in there that's approved. I usually send it to Kimby, and I say, here's the family media plan. This is for your resources. If you'd like to do this at home, or you have any questions, let me know. Then, if there's anything involved in the community with Oakwood, I try to put that outside family resource there that they can do as a family. And then, I have the kids write about it, and if they don't, usually, we take as a class outing, and the kids can write it with me if their family wasn't able to do that, but really trying to engage. And I, media can be great for young children when it's interactive. So, that's what I'm finding, is if I can keep any media that we use interactive, it's helpful, because we have children that can't communicate, because we have children with disabilities, so they use media, but a lot of that media usage, iPads, is interactive, and they have to talk as well. So, I try to encourage parents that it's not all negative, you know, because they don't want to be attacked, but just to really make sure they're focusing if their child is on that time. And then, as far as morning greetings, I've noticed that that's huge to start a child's day. Anytime I can get time to communicate with the child one-on-one, especially if I know that they're struggling with that media addiction, I hate to use addiction, but it really does show. When you take media away, the child does not know what to do. It kind of goes crazy. The child will have a hard time, but I try to improve, and then they have to greet two peers. They don't have to, but they seem to, that's part of the schedule, and they check it off, and they say good morning, or they can high five. Sometimes, we have a list of their greetings that they can choose, and they enjoy that. I, can you go to the next? I don't want to repeat myself, but. Integrated Literacy and Phonetic Curriculum. So, if they, we do do searches around the school for different things that they can find letter-wise, and then we have them ask a question, and if they can't, they have a peer with them. So, teaching them how to engage with others outside of myself and their parents at a young age is really crucial, seeing that a computer or media does not have to do that for them, seeing how much fun they get to have interacting with others. Sometimes, they take their pictures, and they'll go up to Ms. Fisk, who is our secretary, and show them. Sometimes, they go to their 4th grade buddy and exchange different things like that, but we're finding the more we can implicate, sorry, the more we involve older kids with them, they see that the older kids are off their phones and media, because a lot of times, they see older kids on their phone and are not used to seeing them interact. And we've actually noticed the 4th grade teacher saying that their students have improved in communication and developmental skills in interacting with our preschoolers, so, and engaging with more social skills and offering to help them outside and things like that. So, I, at the last slide, there are resources. Cincinnati Children's offers a play-based therapy that children, you do have to be, a doctor does have to recommend that, but a lot of children are finding a lot of respite from that, and parents, they actually train the parents from 0 to 5 how to play and interact with their children. So, you can go on the very last slide. I think it's, there's also a Common Source Media. I put this for families, and whenever they're worried about a game or a movie or a child movie, you can go to Common Source Media and click that link. You can type in any movie, any video game, any app, any educational app, and they find that really helpful. On Our Sleeves Mental Health Foundation is a great foundation for overall interactions for children, and it gives parents ideas of places they can take their child in the area. The Cincinnati Museum offers for free to families. You can go on there and click, and they have all sorts of classes that parents can take. They have play-based therapy. That's, over the summer, it was a lot more interactive because, you know, children being out of school, but that's a great link for families. So, these are a lot of the things that we offer. The one that my son typed that in for me, it says, this "I'm cool" link is basically, if you click on that, that is the copy of the Family Gaming Plan that I sent home to families. They had a lot of fun doing this with their kids, and I got a lot of feedback, and it was not forced. It was just in a packet that I usually put in there, but you can kind of see different questions. They can sit down at dinner or at the pool or different things, and children can actually rate it. You know, they can point to the different smiley faces and kind of go through that. And then, they sign it. They can sign it if they make it like their family constitution, but it's very non-threatening to families, and I always want to make sure that they trust me with that, that they can come to me. How do I get my child more engaged? How do I communicate? And sometimes, they have teenagers, they'll come back, and I feel like I'm old, but I have had their child 10 years ago, and they're just like, I can't get them to communicate, but any questions? I know I'm kind of running through that really fast for me. Yes, so this Family Gaming Plan is on one of those links. The Common Source Media has it. I think on the, On Our Sleeves Mental Health Foundation has that Family Gaming Plan. You can type in on your computer, Family Gaming Plan. There's a lot of different versions of it. I chose this because it was more preschool-friendly with the smiley faces. The kids can take part in that if they can't communicate. It's just a good way, as a family, to come together and have conversation. I think this, it was really sad. I went to the library just up here, and the little boy, he had picked out all his books, and his mom was sitting on the phone, and he kept putting the books in her lap, and she would just, she'd push them away, and then he'd put it again, and so then, he just sat on the floor and grabbed a truck, and you know, for there, they were there for an hour. Like, I was doing research with finding some books for my classroom, and I just thought, he's thinking, I would love to be that phone to just have my mom's attention, you know? And I almost got a book and read to him, but I was like, I might get arrested, and I don't want to represent Oakwood that way, but I wanted to say, give them, give them to me, please, please. But it also, I think we're all guilty of, you know, engaging, but that's been, of all the research I read, that's been the biggest thing, is they just, the kids are lacking that interaction. They don't know when something goes wrong. They look around like, who's going to help me? So, I really, I really think we can make a huge difference by offering a lot of these things, but I want families to know that they're awesome and they can change it. We did notice, in my research, the student I had kind of followed through, he could not have a conversation unless it was about the game he was playing, and when I had a conversation with the mom, we made interventions, and she did it at home. The child made incredible progress. Like, we didn't think we'd be able to move him forward, and just a few months of her finding, he was up at night with her phone, had kind of been playing games, not sleeping. She thought he had to go get medicine. He was off the medicine. He was ready to go for kindergarten. You know, it was just having a simple conversation where she felt safe. So, I think we can make a huge difference. Thank you. Oh, I appreciate it. Sorry if I rambled. It's just something I'm really passionate about, so I love being here. Thank you.
All right. Next up is item 2C, Public Comments, and I invite up to the podium. Well, if you would, just a moment, Robert. I would like to just read a statement. And, "The School Board and administrative staff encourage and appreciate community interest in meetings of the Board of Education. This section of the agenda is designed to hear the views of community members about their schools and items on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to address the board at the visitor's podium so that the speaker's remarks can be clearly heard. The speakers should give their full name and limit comments to three minutes. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to shall be limited to 30 minutes, subject to the discretion of the presiding officer. Consistent with our policy 9130 on public complaints, we ask that complaints about particular employees be referred to the superintendent and not addressed during a public session. We remind all speakers that our district values and respects all people as they are, and our district is committed to creating and maintaining a safe space for all students and community members. We want to remind our community that we value public input and always appreciate when our community members remind our district values, remember our district values, refrain from using harmful or offensive language, and share their comments in a civil and respectful manner. It is not our usual practice to respond to remarks during visitor comment section of our meeting, so we appreciate the comments that you're about to give us, but again, that is just a public comment to the board, and then we'll digest that each individually." So, at this point, if you would, Mr. Ross, come on up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to share with us what's on your mind.
Great. Thanks so much. So, my name's Rob Ross, and I'm here as the dad of Tennyson, who's going into 8th grade, and Delaney, who's going into 7th grade, and then Millie, who's going into 5th. So, I've got, had great experiences with the school thus far. Didn't mean to come and have the first three talks be about cell phones, but I think that's what's going to end up happening. We've already talked a little bit about the anxious generation, and so, some emotional impacts on kids, and also some conversation about just the ability to interact socially. That's another piece. My focus for what I wanted to talk about was our ability to have a sustained, focused kind of mental exercise, and the opposite of that is getting distracted. And so, I think there's a lot of great statistics out there. I'm just going to share a couple of stories from my own perspective, and that is, had a couple kids come home with my son a couple of years ago when he was in 6th grade, lunchtime, they'd come, we'd cook up some french fries and sandwiches, and they'd eat, and then they'd go out and jump on the trampoline during lunch. And one day, one of the kids forgot and left their cellphone on the table when they went out to jump on the trampoline, and they forgot and left the volume on it. So, I was there. I was cleaning up lunch, and I was amazed at how much that phone was dinging. It was probably every 15 to 20 seconds, there would be a ding come through. And the kids came back in from jumping, and I said, who is talking to you? You just got, and she looked at her phone, she said, that's not that bad. It's only 100 messages. I was like, not that bad? What, like, what's going on? They said, well, so they're on these chat groups with, you know, 15 people, 30 people, 50 people, and there's conversations going constantly. So, that's one story. The other story is my memory of graduate school. So, I have a degree in math, computer science with a minor in math, and I was taking a class on matrix analysis, and don't worry about what that is, but it is, it's the theory that underlines things like Google search. So, how do you find like a webpage to go to? And this class met twice a week for two hours at a go. We'd met for 10 weeks. At the end, it was the last day of class, and so we had a two-hour lecture. The professor said, I'm going to start talking, and an hour and 45 minutes from now, you're going to understand how to implement Google's algorithm. And so, we spent an hour and 45 minutes laying out all of these pieces that you needed to be able to then put them all together in the last 10 minutes or so. And the class ended, and he said, and there you have it. And I thought about the level of focus that it took to just be able to absorb the knowledge that someone else had already discovered, let alone discover it yourself, and I laid that against this constant interruption. And I think I just worry about our kid's ability to develop the sort of focused musculature that they need, just like you need to really train to be able to run for an hour straight. You need to be able to train to think for an hour straight, too. And so, I'm obviously team no cell phones in schools. You probably figured that out by now, and I know that with House Bill 250, you all will have the opportunity to think about what our policy will be on that sometime this year, and I just encourage you to be as restrictive as possible, and I'm happy to take any arrows that come your way over that. I think that was my time. Is that right? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is item number 3, Board Reports. Do we have any this month? Nope. Fantastic. All right. Thank you. Next up is item number 4, Budget and Finance.
Thank you so much for that reminder. Item A under Budget and Finance is the July 2024 Monthly Financial Report. It's lighter than most months because we have not set our master financial plan yet. We typically talk to you about that in September, so that'll be coming next month. Item B and C are action items. If you would, I would like for you to take those together in one action. The first is the Fiscal Year 2025 Certificate of Estimated Resources. This is a required county auditor form that gets us going with estimating our revenues for the fiscal year. And then, item C is, it's called Commercial Paper and Banker's Acceptance. Commercial paper is an investment tool that we have the opportunity as a public entity to invest in, and there's a requirement through the auditor state that, and the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, that we report to you the year's activity in the commercial paper world, so to speak, of investments. So, that's not all of our investments, but just that particular investment tool. So, items B and C for your consideration tonight.
Can I get a motion for items 4B and C? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo. Mr. Ryder. Ms. Kawhi. Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next up, any unfinished business before the board? Any new business before the board? Next up is number 7, Administrator Reports and Superintendent Recommendations.
Yes, thank you. I'll take items number 7A through C. They're informational items. This is a first read to say, on our health standards, letter A. Letter B is our Family and Consumer Science standards, and letter C is our Physical Education standards. For you to take a look at them this month, and then we'll, I'll be coming back to recommend the approval for them at our September 9th board meeting. Letter D, would like to get a recommendation for your approval, is our Elementary Student Handbook. This was brought last month. No substantial changes, other than looking at language for more inclusivity from parents to families and gender pronouns to be more inclusive.
Can I get a motion for item 7D, please? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. Kawhi. Ms. DiLorenzo. Mr. Ryder. Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Number 7, letter E, Attendance Policy 5200, as proposed in the attachment, is just the updated, provided by updates, just that go along to make it in line with our handbook. We've done a lot of work around this through our Assistant Superintendent Allison Couch Building Administrators, so this is just an opportunity to just make sure that we've got alignment between our handbook and our policy. got alignment between our handbook and our policy, so we're executing properly.
All right, I need a motion, please, for item seven, E.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Letter F is an update to our supplemental index, indexes as proposed, we had just kind of a shift, I guess, in the number of supplementals, there's still a net, we're net neutral on the number of them, it's just taking from one that we hadn't been using to another in order to provide, especially our Oakwood High School, National Honor Society, student numbers continue to increase, and it's just a way to help support that.
Motion, please, for item seven, F.
So moved.
Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Letter G, seven G, is our elementary school lunch price. We do take a look every year at our school lunch account, and I don't bring this forward without there being a lot of conversations and considerations that happened over the past couple of months. We continue to look at kind of our bottom line to make sure that, we're not trying to make money off of our lunches, we just want to at least be neutral, but it's obviously, just like everything else, we continue to see an increase. Our business manager, Frank Eaton, was able to look at area school districts to see kind of what's happening with other places and where our number comes in. We don't tend to do this on a regular basis, and it's not our goal to do that, but we are, I'm recommending for us to increase our lunch price to $3.40 for the 24-25 school year.
Can I get a motion for item seven, G, please?
So moved.
Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Seven H is the intent to participate, or again, our business manager, Frank Eaton, talked about this when he came to the podium, recommendations made to approve a resolution of intent to participate in the Ohio Facility Construction Commission, expedited local partnership program, the ELP.
Motion for item seven, H, please.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Finally, letter I is the reimbursement resolution, making a recommendation to approve the attached reimbursement resolution for facility expenses incurred under the expedited local partnership program of the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission.
Can I get a motion for item seven, I, please?
Second.
Ms. Sauber?
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Moves us to number eight, personnel items, resignations, non-renewals.
Yes, I'll take numbers A, letter A, and B together under one item. Letter A is the supplemental resignations for 2024-25, we have one position, and then letter B, we have a teacher that has resigned to become assistant principal at another high school, and so, wish him the best of luck, it's our loss. We did get somebody to fill the position, we're excited about him, but just wanted to bring that also.
Can I get a motion for items eight, A, and eight, B?
So moved.
Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
That brings us to number nine, personnel items, recommendations.
Okay, if you can hang tight with me, we're going to take items number nine, A through M, under one motion, I'm going to read the recommended action items. Letter A is the recommendation to approve the following supplemental contracts and volunteers as listed. Letter B is the recommendation to approve the following flexible supplemental contracts for the 24-25 school year, that's a sign language club position. Letter C is a recommendation made to hire Lauren Gentry on an as-needed basis to assist with district communications per attached hourly rate. Letter D is the recommendation to approve the attached elementary intervention specialist job share proposal at Smith Elementary School between two teachers. Letter E is a recommendation to employ Josh Johnson as our music teacher for Smith Elementary School. Letter F is the recommendation to hire Dan Hill as a van driver. Letter G is a recommendation to employ Melissa Arizola as our health assistant. Letter H is a recommendation to employ Lisa Joy Castro as the intervention specialist point four FTEs at Smith Elementary. Letter I is a recommendation to revise the FTE amount for the 24-25 school year for a position. Letter J is to recommend, to approve pay for Katie Peace Arbor for completed work as on theater. Letter K is a recommendation to employ Steve Miller as custodian at Smith Elementary. Letter L is a recommendation made to employ Dan Pulson at, custodian at the junior high high school. Letter M is a recommendation for a list of attachment, attached list of substitute teachers, the teachers, everything, okay? Thank you for that, and that is A through M.
Can I get a motion for letters nine, A through M, please?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Next is item 10, executive session. Can I get a motion to enter into executive session for the specific purpose of discussing the details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Thank you all for attending our Board of Education today, we welcome everyone from the public who was in attendance, and at this time, we're going to move into executive